With the roll call. Start out with a roll call, please.
Brannick.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Stender.
Here.
Berlin.
I think he's online, eh?
He is online. Lusay.
Here.
Mika.
Here.
Vtech.
Here.
Huber.
Here.
Chudy.
Here.
Carl.
Here.
Weiner. John Weiner. Murdick.
Here.
Elifson.
Here.
McKenzie.
Here.
Negro. Laura Negro. Metzener.
He's online.
Campbell.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Kinney.
Here.
Kufal.
Here.
Mike Berlin.
Here.
Thank you. Eighteen present.
Next we'll observe just a quick moment of silence and then we'll do the federal allegiance. Please stand for the federal allegiance. We need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Mike Berlin. Seconded by Ron Cinder. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Most curious, thank you. Next we're going to the public comment period. We would like to limit people to three minutes. We have a long meeting ahead of us and that's normal procedure of three minutes, so. Anyone that wants to enter the public comment period, just raise your hand or come forward or whatever. We're gonna do them in that order? Okay, first one, Michael Kaczka. From the point. That, that's fine.
So, good morning. Michael Cookta, Ashland County taxpayer, La Pointe Town Administrator. I want to start by thanking the six of you who voted to continue our law enforcement agreement. We will not forget your effort to save a partnership that worked so well for both of us for more than twenty-five years. Unfortunately, your wisdom did not prevail. The result is bad enough. How it went down is worse. For the record, let's call this board's decision what it is. A premeditated cash grab. This scheme was railroaded from the beginning. You ignored the previous sheriff. You ignored the current sheriff. Our board tried to work out an agreement. You refused to negotiate. Rather than talk with us, you canceled meetings. Rather than talk with us, you adjourned meetings before we came up on the agenda. Rather than talk with us, you kicked us out of the room and made your decision behind closed doors. Many of you refused to return our phone calls, refused to return our emails. We tried to be collaborative, respectful, responsive. We showed up. We provided information when you asked for it. We answered your questions. In that spirit, I want to answer one more question. At your November meeting, many of you wondered why La Pointe's police should get money when you don't give money to Mellon's police. The simple answer? Mellon gets actual law enforcement from you. In the last two years, sheriff's deputies responded to Mellon nine-hundred-eighty-one times. They responded to La Pointe once. In other words, Mellon gets more service in a day than La Pointe gets in a year. On one hand, that discrepancy proves how well our twenty-seven-year agreement worked. It freed up sheriff's resources to focus on your mainland communities. Your communities. On the other hand, that discrepancy shows how far you are from fulfilling your statutory responsibility and providing law enforcement coverage equally across the entire county. Let's be clear, you are not meeting your legal responsibilities in La Pointe. Your actions and inactions leave La Pointe few options. So, as you may know, we are filing a claim against the county. We are seeking to get back the tax money we are paying you for services we do not receive. We also filed a petition with the State Department of Revenue. We are seeking to shift law enforcement taxes from the county's levy to the town levy. Again, so we can get back the tax money we are paying you for services you do not provide. And we are just getting started. We will pursue any avenue we need to, to get the services we are paying for and to secure the resources we need to keep our community safe. You have demonstrated we cannot rely on you. So we have no choice but to rely on ourselves. Thank you.
Next up is Jeff Petron. If I got that right.
Hi, I'm Jeff Petron. I'm here to speak on behalf of Kim LaVassar. As a former Wisconsin state employee with over twenty-three years of service working as a correctional officer at Mendota Mental Health Institute in Madison and as a correctional sergeant at three prisons, Oak Hill, Gordon, and Chipewa Valley Correctional Treatment Facility within the Department of Corrections. The issue is currently making the news within the pages of the Ashland Daily Press and amongst the in-town are very concerning to me. Recently employed of the Sheriff's Department whom I do not know, Lieutenant Kim LaVassar was fired from her job as a correctional officer after first being demoted from her position as the jail administrator only weeks earlier. Upon being demoted from her position as the jail administrator only weeks earlier. Upon being demoted, the sheriff felt the only qualified person to fill that position of jail administrator was his cousin-in-law. There was no just cause given for this demotion, but the sheriff's department, sheriff's cousin sure did benefit from this action. Weeks later, LaVassar, now a correctional officer, was terminated from the sheriff's department. Again, no just cause was given and the fact that she had no disciplinary actions on her record makes Zupki's actions even more troubling. The Ashland County Board has a responsibility not only to the taxpayers, but for all of the county employees. Having worked in corrections for many years, I can state that it is a very stressful and demanding job. Made all the worse when Scott Walker implemented Act Ten, which made it more difficult because of his gutting of union rights, no pay raises, having more to pay towards one's healthcare and our pensions. This resulted in a mass exodus of employees either retiring, as I did, or just exiting for other jobs. Morale suffered and overtime soared, which not only staff paid for, but the taxpayers in overtime. I'm sure the morale within the jail has suffered not knowing that they could be terminated for no just cause since that's what Zupki is ignoring their, their basic job rights. The fact that the union has not stepped in on this matter is really baffling to me. Zupki was rather blunt last week when questioned by the Daily Press when he refused to answer a simple question stating to the effect, during the election, you reported on my owning two homes, one in Bayfield County and the other in Ashland County. So I'm not going to answer your question. He needs to answer your questions now and be held accountable to the citizens of Ashland and the employees here for his actions. That's all I've got there, but I will state that while I was at Mendota, I saw two captains terminated. They were given plenty of, bah, I was given, yeah.
Good morning. Gigi Cloud. I am a resident of Ashland, Wisconsin, Ashland County and a member of the Bad River Band of Lake Spirit, Chipewa. I understand that I may address you as the board, but you are not allowed to answer questions. So I'm before you today to raise concerns regarding an employee or former of the Ashland County Sheriff's Office. My overall shock and utter disgust when hearing that my dear friend Kim LaVassar was demoted and then later on escorted from her place of employment after twenty-two years. Let that sink in. Twenty-two years of her life dedicated to the county and this is how she's treated. No expla- explanation, no letter of reason. The disrespect and treatment of a long-term employee is seriously disheartening. She loses her job, her time she has accrued, and just throw her out like a piece of trash. Ashland County Board, I implore you to take action to protect these employees under the so-called administrative designation. There should not be the ability for one person to at-will dismiss a long-term employee that has dedicated twenty-two years to the Ashland County. It's a shameful act.
Next up, Kim LaVassar.
I'd like to start by saying that I did an open records request of my personnel file. As far as disciplinary, the only thing in my file is a verbal reprimand from twenty years ago. That's two thousand and three. One verbal reprimand from twenty years ago. However, I do have four letters of commendation and a letter of appreciation that was given to me by Sheriff Brennan before he left. Just yesterday, I saw an inmate that was recently released. He said that all of the inmates feel that I have been railroaded. I also saw a parent of an inmate and she said that when she goes in, that no one treats her with the respect that I have given her. And she said that she hopes that her child that's in jail is not being treated that same way. I just don't understand how a person can be doing a great job, giving their all, and it be all taken away. And then to turn around and not be given any of my vacation time, nor my sick time. I had my my insurance taken away from me and now I have no vacation and no sick time. That's how I was gonna pay for my insurance, but I can't because I have no money.
Thanks, Jim. Next up, Mary Jane. Grand or Grandi?
My name is Mary Jane Grandi and I am Kim LaVassar's mother. Kim was hired during a very tentative time due to the untimely death of the last jail administrator. And she worked diligently through these issues to the satisfaction of the county board. She has worked to make the inside of the jail a more aesthetic environment with the mall, the Walmart mural that was painted by one of the prisoners. The library also has been redone with new books, also for prisoners. I also there, since there is a new sheriff that was voted in, a matter of a cut, in a couple of weeks, he fires Kim with no reason, never giving a reason to this date. Also, I am representing five of the ex-prisoners from the Ashland County Jail that do not wish to speak if in case they go back to jail, there aren't any repercussions from the new administrative sheriff. A person who has twenty-two years of experience should be considered an asset within the jail system when someone new is coming to town. Because she has a great deal of experience, not only with the prisoners, but also with the, the parents, also with the sheriff that has now retired. It is my, in my estimation, that this was the biggest mistake that could have been made. And I believe that it should be brought to light, if not through this county board, through some legal action. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Donna Sechen.
Good morning. My name is Donna Sechen. In full disclosure, I'm Kim LaVassar's sister. I just wanted to come to say that I have the unique opportunity to work with a lot of law enforcement because I work at the hospital in Ashland Memorial Medical Center. And after seeing the way this was handled and the fact that you can have a incredible career with very, with accommodations, but no disciplinary actions, there are other people in that department that are considering looking for other employment because they don't want to be next. They are worried that, yes, I'm doing a good job, but what happens tomorrow or next week? And from talking with them, it seems that there is already a shortage of employees in the jail. When the jailers or the sheriff or the police officers come to the hospital, at times they have to stay there for extended periods with inmate for one reason or another, so they could be there for several hours. So I have a chance to visit and talk with them and it seems like the morale there and the uncertainty of what could possibly happen next. And then as the further you go down, insurance is gone, vacation that was earned that was never used because they were so shorthanded was taken away, sick time which wasn't used was taken away. There are several people who are looking at other options. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention and let you know I felt that everything about this was wrong, you know, that, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Rick or Rich Nettleton?
My name's Rick Nettleton. I do work in Ashland as a real estate agent, but I am a Bayfield County resident. I also have known Kim for the better part of thirty years. She worked for me in the past. She was a very good employee. She did her job thoroughly. Never had babysit. Anything she was required to do, she did promptly. I believe that'd be true in the sheriff's department as well. My concern is basically the county is why did Mr. Zupki even be allowed to run? He's a Bayfield County resident. He lives in the same township I do. Town of Kelly, I have his address right here. I also pulled up his tax statement in Ashland County. And he does have a property in Ashland County. The mailing address for those taxes are in Bayfield County. So his residence is in Bayfield County and why is there a sheriff in Bayfield or in Ashland County that lives in Bayfield County? And I'm gonna say that's on you people. You should have vetted him. He wasn't vetted very good. If you put the deputies on the stand and ask them where his address is, under oath, how many are gonna testify that he lives in Bayfield County or how many are gonna testify in Ashland County? I know it. Here's his addresses. I'd be happy to leave it here. You can look it up. He does have a property in Mellon, but that is not his mailing address. I, I think you people should really look at who is the one that should be looking at being reprimanded here and it's not Kim LaVassar. It's the sheriff.
Thank you. With that, that's all the public comment applications we got in. She's gone. Next we'll go to number four, appointments. Appointment of Chief Deputy Nathaniel Delegan.
This is Laura Negro. I'll make the motion that we appoint Nate Delegan at Chief Deputy.
Brad Ray, second.
We don't have anybody to comment on that. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the appointment of Chief Deputy to Chief Deputy Nathaniel Delegan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, please.
In the light of the information that we just received, do we have any information that we should appoint a new chief deputy? Is anybody in his spot right now?
Mr. Delegan is, is serving in interim capacity at the moment.
Anybody else have comment? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Most curious, thank you. Next we have a presentation. What? Don't please correct me if I'm not wrong.
Committee and we're here to do financial report for the county fair. Doreen can't be here today because she's at MMC. So Brett and I are gonna do it together. While he's passing around this report, Doreen is our treasurer and she's been here for about three, four years already, Brett.
Yep.
Every year that she's done this treasure job for the county fair, we've had money in the bank. And she does a very good job of it. And Brett, have you got copies of the thing for everybody?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. The county board has, or the Ashland County Fair, while he's passing this out, started in eighteen ninety-five and it continues until today. The it is on. All right, so the fair started in eighteen ninety-five. Every county in the state has a county fair. Your four H is the people who have to enter in your county fair in order to pass the four H exam for the year. And so what Brett is passing out is the budget and I can let you read the letter while he's passing it out. So each year at the end of the fair, all this reporting has to be sent into the state. So we wait for two to three months to get all the electric bills that everybody's paid. And so that's why in November we were gonna do it, but it, I don't know, something happened. We couldn't do it in November and then December and here we are in February doing the report. And if the, when the county gives the fair twenty thousand dollars a year, without that money, the fair will not survive. So every year Brett, I, Doreen and everybody else fights hard to keep that money in the budget and looks like Brett's ready to go.
Ready to go. I'd like to first take a moment to thank the county board for their past support for the Ashland County Fair and their ongoing future support. We had Doreen put together our, our annual report, as Kathy said. I'll be real brief with this. I don't want to take up any more time than I need to. Excuse me. If you look through that report, you'll see that we netted about thirty thousand five hundred dollars this year. So that was a, a, a big boost for us this year. And a, and a, a unique one for sure. We decided this year or this last year to start taking some of the county's portion of their donation to us to start working on some of the infrastructure out there as little as, you know, as, as much as we could do without depleting it completely. So I wanted to give a couple of updates on that. We did some electrical work. We've gotten some new panels for some of our buildings, the roof, so it would stop leaking. And some other minor plumbing. So with the, with the additional amount that we have netted, the thirty thousand, we're gonna set a budget this year, a more firm budget than we have in the past and really look into what we can start rehabbing in terms of the buildings on a more structural level. I know many of you are out there and, and, and have been out to our fairgrounds and have seen what, what we have for buildings and we've got to slowly start fixing those buildings before we leave, uh, lose them. So that's kind of what we're hoping this year to use the majority of, of the contribution from the county. And I think historically that's originally what that funds were meant to be for. As, and I, I can't remember the exact year that we started getting that donation, but I know that that's originally what it was for. And we weren't able to, to use that until the la- for that purpose until the last couple of years, so. I'll leave it with that and if, if you have any questions, you can let me know and be happy to answer them. Yes.
I want to thank you for the work that you guys do and I recognize that our fair is weather dependent. And the years that you do not have good weather, you have financial issues and, and I hope we can continue to bridge that. I think it's great that we get to support stuff and you look at some of the names in here. I don't know what they do, but I mean, it's one of the more interesting budgets I've looked at when you talk about hook money. You know, and the, the likes of stuff like that. So with that, one of the things I noticed is that you're having to pay for water out there that you don't have your own well. I would like to see the county help you come up with your own water source there. I think there's enough money that, you know, if, if you guys can reach out to, to our land conservation group and see if we can't help get some grant money to get your own private well there so that you're not having to, to basically buy water from one of the neighbors. As, you know, I'd like to see us as a board, look at doing things like this in support of the fair as well. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. We do have a a, a, a well on premise, but it's hooked to three houses that we feed. It's been there I, I, for many years and that water issue seems to be a reoccurring problem for us. Usually Friday night and Saturday night, we're out of water. Which is, makes it hard for the we, makes it hard for the vendors there to wash stuff. They basically have to pre-fill and hope that we don't run out. But yeah, that's something we've talked about.
Kathy?
And just to update Matt and Brett, the reason that they're sharing the well is through the bottom of Maringle Valley where the fair runs. There is not good water. There is not good water supplies wells. Some people drove nine thousand or nine hundred nine wells to do a dairy farm because the water supply is so poor on that county trunk C. So that's the reason they're sharing the wells is the water supply isn't there. So to dig a well, I hope, I hope they hit water.
Uh, just one quick numbers question at the bottom of the first page, there's a ten thousand dollar item says reimburse starting cash. Just please explain what that is.
Uh, yes, so we do primarily cash sales out there for our ticket gate. Um, and so we have to pull um, the ten thousand dollars in starting cash twenties, tens, fives, ones, et cetera. Um, to be able to make change at our gate and as well as our um, two points of selling that we do, which is um, through the Red Dog Saloon and um, beverages in the grandstands. So basically what we do is we take that starting cash and we've got, and then once the fair is over, we take exactly what that starting cash was and put it back into the bank account.
So that's actually not a revenue?
Correct.
Gary.
Yeah, just a quick question, and if you don't have the exact numbers, it's fine, but on the very first page, in January say of twenty-two, you had started with something. This, when you look at the current bank balance of seventy-one thousand and you look at a summary of twenty-two, it just shows the receipts, the disbursements in the net, but you started with something to get to the seventy-one thousand.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so in, in January twenty-two, there was a, a some type of a balance.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead, Pat.
Ashland County gives the Chamber of Commerce money to market the area. Um, I would encourage you to lean heavily on them for marketing. Get um, what you have on the fair in sooner than later because a lot of people make their plans for vacations, you know, this time of year and part of that is booking rooms in Ashland when something available. So the sooner your information is on the chamber website, the sooner people can book rooms here. We don't see the full economic impact of this fair because, for example, we don't know how many rooms people book. Um, you know, the city gets a room tax from that. We benefit by the money they spend in the local community through sales tax. So um, I know last year Kathy, you said they took more pictures. So you've got some good pictures to work with for your website and for the chamber website. Um, my sense last year out there was that most of this is locals and most of them aren't from the city of Ashland. I think there's more people in Ashland that would attend if more people knew about it and what there was to offer. I thought what you had for rides was pretty amazing, um, how that worked. And I could see people from the cities bringing their kids up for what that fair has to offer if they knew more about it. So I think there's a lot of potential there. And then correct me if I'm wrong, but is there a sign to the fair right off the highway there? Cause um, it sure didn't seem like we noticed that very readily. Um, so, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we do have a sign. Uh, it, it hangs. It's rather dated though. That's probably why it's not noticeable and maybe something we need to add a little, uh, it's like a, a dark blue paint on it. So it doesn't really pop on the side of the highway. But um, I have spoke with um, in terms of the Chamber of Commerce, I have spoke to them um, actually real recently and I know they put us in um, one of their, I, I forget who they, Travel Wisconsin, I believe it was. So they were, they, they told us that they had put us in that. Um, but definitely you're gonna try to work with them as much as possible.
Go ahead, Liz.
I know it's just a stab in the dark, but um, you know, we have the concert in the corn. If we could um, talk to those bands, if they had other bands that were, you know, not as famous and not, you wouldn't take as much money is we could hook one of those up with the fair that would do it at a cut rate to get people in the door. Um, I know we have, we have a lot of grandstand things, but a lot of people, you know, love music and you know, that would be a good thing to get them in. Also um, during the year, if we did get those grounds in good working condition, we could use that for other than the fair, maybe a, a local um, concert or something. Or you know, different fair like carnivals, like children's carnivals or something like that. Thank you to raise money.
Um, one thing, just so you know, we have a carnival every year at the county fair. It's twenty-four thousand dollars just to get the carnival to come in for four days. So that's almost a quarter of the budget just to get the carnival in there. And you cannot have a county fair without a carnival. People have tried that and it doesn't work. So and bands are so expensive. Uh, Trace Atkins is coming, I think in the fall. I bet you he didn't come for a cheap reduced price. They probably charged, you know how much they fought on?
I, I, I don't.
I bet.
But it is interesting you bring that up because it has been something we've I, I've thought about um, and was gonna put on our next agenda was to discuss some way to get maybe not a a rising, you know, not maybe not a, a, a current star, but somebody who may be up in the risings to see if they would lend us a favor um, on maybe the Thursday night. Uh, so, thank you.
Thank you for your report. Brett, before you leave, do you have another one of these for staff?
Yes.
Alright, any other questions?
Dan.
And Pat, your suggestion about doing better.
Can we get this information added to the packet?
A lady is gonna do it, um, her name? Lincoln.
Oh, yes.
She's gonna take pictures for the fair. And the um, Chamber of Commerce gave uh, up to five hundred dollars for a full half-page ad in the up, up bottom line news. So they paid for that too this year. So it was a full half ad. Thanks, everybody. Come to the county fair.
Hey, next on the agenda is approval of the county board minutes from November fifteenth. You need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Motion by Kathy Schute. Do we have a second? Second by George Mecca. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Most motion carries. Thank you. We go to six B, a resolution. R O two twenty twenty-three fourteen thirty-five honoring Michael McBrennan.
So moved, Franek.
Ray's second.
We don't have any comment on that, uh, Dan.
Oh, um, no, this, the resolution speaks for itself. Um, Sheriff Brennan served the county for twelve years and it's only fitting that we honor him.
We have a motion in a second. Alright, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, resolution, next resolution, R O two twenty twenty-three fourteen thirty-six. Requesting the state to revise the current real estate transfer fee revenue, revenue sharing formula. Dan, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, this is a resolution. It's moving around a bunch of counties. Why, years ago, the state changed the funding formula, which ends up costing us quite a bit of money. So most counties are asking that the state revert back to a fifty-fifty split on real estate transfer fees to be- better fund the counties.
Ray motion to approve.
Mike seconds.
Who seconded it? Oh, okay. Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We go to six D, resolution, R O two twenty twenty-three fourteen thirty-seven. Victim Witness Assistance Program. Dan?
Franek, so moved.
This is Laura Negro. I'll second that.
You're not gonna give us anything on this?
Um, this is a resolution we need to pass in order to qualify for grant funding.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any, any questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Resolution, R O two twenty twenty-three fourteen thirty-eight, resolution to assign signatory authority for carbon credit project.
Chris Hoffman, are you on the line?
I am. Um, this was a request from the American Carbon Registry. Um, listing them um, as part of the carbon project. We've done one of these for Blue Source or Inu. This is coming from American Carbon Registry, just so they know that the forest administrator has been delegated the authority to sign paperwork for the carbon project.
This is Laura Negro. I'll make that motion.
Mike seconds.
Motion to approve by Laura Negro, seconded by Kathy Schute. Any more questions?
Aye.
Famers.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Resolution, R O two twenty twenty-three fourteen thirty-nine, county forest variable acreage share payment.
Uh, this resolution is an annual thing that we do. It's part of our budget down here. We get fifty cents per acre um, from the state. We pay it back with timber revenue. Um, and we use it to do road maintenance and buy our tree marking paint.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Ron Sendar. George, did you have a go a second?
I had a question. I don't understand the reference to December thirty-first.
This Laura Negro will make a second on that.
Oh, go ahead, George. Okay.
I understand the reference to December thirty-first and that we're meeting in February. Is this for the year twenty twenty-three or the year twenty twenty-four?
It is for the year twenty twenty-three. The state understands that meeting schedules and stuff are sometimes don't line up with uh, the dates that they want to see things done on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any more questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Discussion and action on the Ashland County Forest Annual Work Plan twenty twenty-three.
Um, this is also an annual project that the department puts together. Um, it's a statutory requirement to produce a work plan. Um, we like to list out the stuff that we're doing. The first page is the most important page. It shows that we're gonna look at fourteen hundred and forty-six acres of timber. Um, there's a breakdown there. The timber types will do an assessment to determine if that timber is ready to be harvested and if so, in what form that harvest will take place, then we'll establish those sales and attempt to sell those sales. Um, then the next couple of pages are a typical list of the work that we do on an annual basis. Um, so it doesn't change a lot from year to year, but we do add um, new projects, take projects off as we complete them. So you'll see number seventeen is the uh, carbon credit project that we added this year. Um, and that'll be ongoing now for the future. Um, so this is an annual work plan. If there's any questions about what we're doing down here, um, more than happy to answer them. And if there's ever a time anybody ever wants to go out and see what we're doing in the, in the county forest, I'm more than happy to take people for a ride.
Thank you. Any questions?
Question? Question?
Yes, George.
Yeah, Chris, in your uh, in your summary letter here refers to uh, looking at past, present and future conditions.
Correct.
And I'm wondering if you're looking, what, what you're considering there for future conditions and whether it affects your, um, your mix of species.
Um, so the future condition report that the state database prepares for us takes a snapshot of our past management practices, um, and what we've done in, in any changes that we may have forced to, to happen on the landscape and then takes that into account. At this point, we're trying to maintain the species mix and diversity that we have. Um, we're trying to maintain that going forward. Um, it doesn't pay to fight mother nature, so we're trying to work um, within the bounds of what we have. So the, the effort is to maintain the structural breakdown that we have and then that report just reflects anything. Uh, we may have a stand of uh, lowland hardwoods that's got an Aspen component in it. When we do a management activity in there, it may convert some of that lowland hardwood to Aspen and that's what that report kind of tries to track. Um, if there's any of those trends that are developing, but the goal is to maintain you know, the status quo going forward. If that makes sense.
Thank you.
This is Laura Negro. I'll make the motion that we pass this plan.
George will say a second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to accept this report. All of what? Got interrupted. Motion and a second on the table to accept this report. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Thank you. We go to six H, approval of employee handbook change clarification regarding vacation.
I can jump on right equi- right away if you want.
Sure, um, I know, um, Ms. Barningham wanted to speak too. Carrie Barningham. But Mr. Ray, I mean, if you have a solution.
I uh, first want to say it was it oversight, obviously, to not look at the first two, the last two years when we passed this in November. Um, my solution, and I'd like to make a motion, is to change the second sen- sentence of the uh, vacation section of the employee handbook to read vacation is accrued in a twelve-month period beginning at the time of hire to be used in the twelve-month period prior to employee's anniversary date. This would mean that every employee current right now would have at least ten days of vacation to use before their anniversary date. And rectify the oversight of the November adjustment.
Um, and then I know the question's gonna come up from uh, both the clerk's office and department heads. What do we do with somebody who was hired in February of last year? So they would be having four weeks of vacation right away.
With this motion, what that means is that the, the rest of the handbook indicates that their vacation would expire at their anniversary year. So somebody that was hired on February seventh would have ten days because it would pass today. They would have ten days based off their February seventh anniversary date. And they wouldn't have benefited from the ten days prior, but they get it right now. Somebody that was in March would have the month of February to use their vacation or they could work with you to extend that in rare circumstances as the handbook indicates, and that would be up to the uh, county administrator.
George? So I uh, troubled over this last night because we've received quite a few letters from employees. Could you, you put that microphone a little bit closer? Okay. So it occurs to me that it would simplify things greatly if this were simply stated as a monthly accrual. So employees that were hired last year were entitled to five twelfths of a vacation day accrued each month that they worked last year. Because they were just for a five-day rule and that effective January one this year, they would become entitled to ten twelfths for each month that they work. Because they worked part of the year, part of their service was in a year where it was a five-day benefit and part of their service is in a year, or their first year of service is in a year of a ten-day benefit. So if you simply state the rule as your first year, your first twelve months of employment, you accrue the last year, you would have been accrued five twelfths per month of service and beginning this year on December, on January first, you begin accruing ten twelfths per month of service. And at the end of your first year, that runs the same way. It's have stated in accrual per month. And then it removes all ambiguity.
I, I feel just adding ten days right away, everybody right now today on February seven, twenty twenty-three has ten days and they have to use it or at least ten days because some earn more have ten days right now that they have to use before their anniversary date. That fixes it all and in the future is ten days. It's simple. Just to be clear.
Just to be clear, it accrues on a daily basis, not on a monthly. Because that would screw it up from when they hire in a month, so it's however many days out of the month. And that's what the accrual is based on, not. On a monthly thing, I'm sorry, George, but that wouldn't make sense, I don't think.
Well, then you can just make it a fraction per day. But the point is, it makes the. Understanding of the, of the expressed in months and beginning dates. Is confusing. And if you're gonna state it as, as earned, you get so much per day, I don't care per week, per month. But when you try to break it into years and you have a beginning date of the calendar year, and a beginning different, beginning date of a service year, it becomes confusing for most people.
Gary.
Yeah, I, I have a concern here about. Accounting. I think somebody, maybe the clerk's office or somebody in administration should look at this because. This could become an, an accounting nightmare. I know, I know we didn't intend to. Harm anyone, but by the same token, I got hired last year, I knew what the rules were. I get hired this year, I know what the rules are, if they change, they change, I, I'm not in favor of carrying over. But. Like I say, I think we need to find out from someone in administration or clerk's officer basis. How much accounting is, are we gonna have to do with this?
Well, Sue and Karen are here actually to speak about the accounting issues that they've had since the last board meeting. And they can address your question. While they're at it. So Karen, would you like to come up to the mic? Or you can talk like that. And I do believe Terry Barningham would like to say a few words too, based on. The letter they put in here.
First, I'd like to thank you for letting me speak here. Ashland County has been a wonderful place to work. I've started my ninth year here. And what I'd like to say is that when I started here, I had the opportunity to negotiate. Whatever. There was, it was laid out on the table, the benefits were good. You get your personal, you're sick. And the holidays paid. And at that time, I had an opportunity to ask if I wanted more vacation or not, so with that being said, I've appreciated everything with Ashland County. So when the handbook was reviewed here and on. We. Put in there as of January one two thousand twenty three, people would get the two weeks vacation. When we start to think about going back into previous dates of hire. It makes our work in the county clerk's office harder. It's not to demean anything of the people who were just hired or anything. But I will tell you, for instance, of a young lady who just. Started in our office. She started last May in another office and transferred in. She was aware of her hiring situation. And she is completely. Acceptable of the arrangements of when her anniversary comes, she's going to jump to the two weeks vacation. At that point of that anniversary date. You know, I just think. It's gonna be more clear cut. And the other thing I'd like to add is. I mean, you guys are all aware of all the financial stuffs that we are changing in our office and the employee self-serve, we're trying to upload. Matter of fact, tomorrow we have a meeting with. Springbrook in order to work on uploading those things, there's a lot of time and effort and work that goes into what everybody's sick. Personal invocation is. This will slow that process down tomorrow for us, there's a lot of employees, there's. Hundred and ninety some employees here we're talking about. And to go back and start prorating things and carryovers, I just think we just need to move forward. With how I thought it was interpreted, that it would be a one one two thousand twenty three. The benefits here with Ashland County have been good. You know, and I think anybody who's hired from this point on. Would appreciate that fact. That when they're hired. And those people from twenty one and twenty two, they will. They will have the benefits as soon as their anniversary comes around.
I appreciate that extra work, but I feel part of the, the change was for retention purposes as well, we were seeing a lot of turnover and that. Retention is also an important part, and therefore I think simply saying you have ten days from right now till your anniversary date. Shouldn't be that much, because we're not talking prorating, we're just saying you have ten days from your, to use between right now and your anniversary date, whatever that is. Yes, there's people that are in March that likely won't be able to use it, because they might not be able to be approved to use it in the month of February. But they have ten days and then it will expire just like it normally does. On the anniversary date, and then the new. Sequence would be there, I think it's a one time done, and it, it's, to me, it's a simple, a solution.
Yeah, Matt was up next, Matt.
Yeah, I guess. I, I want to see us do what's fair, and I'm not sure, because there's different situations, I, I guess what I'd like to point out, to me, what's more concerning is termination. If you have somebody that takes their ten days and then leaves, I think we should have clear language, and maybe we do. Saying that, you know, their vacation time was prorated based on, you know, the, the time they worked here. I would like to see us, because I, I can see where this could be an accounting nightmare, as far as keeping track when everybody started and, you know. Ratios of, of what they've earned or not, I'd like to see us go to a specific date and it should be, you know, somewhere related to the budget or something. I don't care if it's the first of the year, first of April, whatever. And, you know, just have that be the, the day to which the vacation starts, you know, your, your annual allotment. And move forward with. You know, however many days that person gets, you know, the next year they get, you know, if they've earned more because of time. That's what they get, and just go on from there and not have it on individual. Anniversary dates of each employee.
Yeah, Matt, on this printout, there is a clause in there that, that deals with the repayment.
I think the reason for this was not so much retention. But to be able to hire people with experience, sometimes, especially Health and Human Services, we have. People. Who have a lot of experience and have vacation earned from their previous. Employment. And then they gotta wait. A year to get vacation when we hire them, and, and so the reason for this change was more to be able to hire. Good experienced people rather than retaining the people that we have, already have.
Can I just make one comment? So I work for a large company and we start over on January first twenty twenty three, so I was hired fifteen years ago. And I accrue in vacation based on that, but. The day you start. You start accruing. Vacation on January first. It flips over because it's a logistical nightmare. To go and do it the other way, so. I think we should talk to Springbrook and ask them, what's the, what's the simplest way, working with our existing staff and. You know, come back on, I, I agree that they need to start accruing. Day one, but. I just think we should make it as simple as possible, so we don't make. Unintended consequences by creating this rule that the county. You know, is trying to do something to fix, that's my personal opinion.
Pat.
I was sympathetic to making an adjustment when I read this, but after listening to discussion. A concern that I, I now have, and I'm not sure where it would lead to is, if we make adjustments. To letters of hire prior to the start of this year. And for good intentions. That opens the can of worms of, well, other people then want their letters of hire adjusted, because now we've made adjustments to letters of hires that were existent. In existence prior to this, so how far back does this go if people start asking for adjustments, in other words, if we make an adjustment here. The board should be prepared to have to draw a line somewhere at some point, if other people then make a request, and I'm. At the moment, I don't know where that would end, but I could see other people saying, hey, what about me? This isn't fair, they got something after they're hired, and, and I can, I can understand that. The other thing I just want to make a note of is, last year, the board approved adding another vacation day, Good Friday, if I'm not mistaken. And so all employees have one more vacation day. That's part of their vacation package than they used to have prior to this year, so we added two more? Okay, so we've got two more vacation days to everybody, so even for those, if we don't go back and make an adjustment. They're gonna benefit from those two extra days of vacation, so back to your, you know, March thing, you know, Easter's gonna fall here pretty soon. They've got another day coming right there, and could you, Heather, could you remind me, it was Good Friday and what else? President's Day, so they. Holiday, I'm sorry, so that everybody's getting these other two holidays, President's Day and Good Friday, that prior to this, they weren't getting. So they benefit from that too.
Just as a point of record, it's not Good Friday, it's. It's a, it's a spring holiday.
Yeah, thank you.
Point of clarification, Brett, can you repeat what your motion was? And. Maybe explain how it would simplify some of this?
Yeah, so my motion was to change in the employee handbook, the second sentence. Which currently reads, vacation is accrued on a twelve month period preceding the employee's anniversary date to be used. In the twelve month period following the employee's anniversary date. And my motion is to change that sentence to read. Vacation is accrued in a twelve month period beginning at time of hire. To be used in a twelve month period prior to the. Employees anniversary date. So that means that everybody comes, they, it's part of the hiring package, they get ten days. On the, or whatever the schedule is based off of that, they get that, and it's been. Clear that everybody has ten days right now until, at least ten days until their anniversary date.
I guess I was gonna ask Sue, how does that affect accounting?
So. Are you stating that they would get the ten days upon hire? Effective when? That's the que, this is one of the big questions.
It still would follow the handbook that says you, you can't use it your first ninety days, but the way, if somebody's hired January first twenty twenty three. After ninety days, they can start using their vacation.
Correct.
And, and they have to pay it back if they. Leave before that.
Right, and that was from the last time.
The same, the same thing, it's just that. You have that ten days, so that goes back to the people that were hired in twenty twenty one, have ten days right now, as opposed to zero or five.
How can you, yes, and, and someone hired in twenty twenty one, in twenty twenty three, they will get two weeks vacation.
Right.
So. But. So are you saying that we go back to the employees that were hired in twenty twenty two, and you give them two weeks vacation?
Yep.
Dan, hold on a second, I, I'm gonna be the bad boy here and bring this up. If somebody from the county board or even administration wants to talk. It would be appropriate to have the chair recognize you. You can't make motions, you can't start a conversation, you can't have questions unless chair recognizes you, so. If you want to throw your darts at me, do it, but in order to make this work. The chair needs to recognize your hand is up in the air and that it's your turn to talk, otherwise we've got four conversations going on, and I apologize.
I was just gonna ask Sue. Would Mr. Ray's plan be easier to implement?
If we went with the starting date. Of now, two seven, and did not go back and hit every employee that was hired in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty one. Like I said, twenty twenty one, hit an anniversary date already in twenty twenty two. So that. We've changed, you know, like Karen said, we're working on implementing the accruals and everything in Springbrook. We've made a concession, or not a concession, but we have made. Vacation. Set up to give everyone after their first year of employment two weeks vacation. And it was currently five weeks. Or before it was five week, or five days, I'm sorry. I don't speak as well as Karen does. But so we just need, I mean. It would be cleaner if we could say as of one one twenty three or as, as of two seven. Moving forward upon hire, employees would get the two weeks. But to go back, there are some employees that have in their letter of offer, like Karen said, a week or two weeks vacation, which they negotiated at the time of hire. I mean, how? How do we do that? We set a date and say anyone in twenty twenty two that was hired gets two weeks off the bat, I mean, we have employees that. Are working that have been here for many years and can't even use their vacation, so to put somebody into a position as a new employee. And say, here you go, you have two weeks, you have forty hours of sick leave, you have thirty hours of personal leave, and you have twelve holidays. We're just trying to get it wrapped, whatever the board agrees on, we will make it work, because we have to, but. We're just. We need clarification, Karen and I have talked at length about this, and we just need some clarification, so.
Go ahead, George.
I just need a point of clarification from Bradley, please, are you talking about awarding this block of occasions, say ten days? On a calendar year basis, or for each individual on their. Anniversary year basis?
No, just following what the. Employee handbook says of anniversary date, you get it as soon as you're hired. Which, the way I read it right now, is that somebody that was hired on January first twenty twenty three has ten days. For twenty twenty three that they can use. They have to use it by January first twenty twenty four, or it's gone. All I'm saying is, let's. Do the people that this change happened, because it's now, it was zero days, five days, ten days. Now let's make it ten, we're making it ten days for the new hire, let's just go back and make it ten days for the old hires as well, so that it's fair across the board. And I understand it's more work to do that, but they have to use it by their anniversary date.
Okay, so to be clear, if they were hired in, in March of twenty twenty two. They don't lose everything at the end of December. They have until March of twenty twenty three to use that ten days?
That, that's the way the employee hand, the way I read their employee handbook is that they have until, if they were hired March first twenty twenty two. Right now, they would have zero vacation, and on March first twenty twenty three, they would have ten days. That's how I read the employee handbook right now. All I'm saying is somebody that, in that case, should technically have ten days right now that they could use potentially with supervisor approval. Before March first, but they would lose those ten days, just like they normally would.
Damn.
Oh, so I know the concern people, employees are gonna say is that. Well, if they're losing their ten days. But if they're, say, hired on March first. But on March first, they will be getting a whole new block of ten days. So they wouldn't really be losing anything. They would just be losing the opportunity. To use it. To spread it out longer.
The way I read the employee handbook is that the leave expires on your. The vacation leave is gone, so. Somebody that was hired. On March first twenty twenty two has zero vacation right now, I'm saying, give them ten days, they might not be able to use it. But they. Come March first, they would only have ten days.
Go ahead, Matt, and then Terry.
Yeah, I'd like to see this matter resolved in the executive committee, I think this is where it should have been handled, and if it hasn't already been there, if it has been there. What is that committee's recommendation, if it hasn't been there, this needs to be referred to the executive committee to be worked out.
Go ahead, Terry.
Thank you again, I, I just want to clarify. A couple things, the recommendation that. The Sheriff's Department, Human Services. And. Who am I missing, the Highway Department, the three biggest departments in the county. Have all conferred, and, and we think we came up with a really good solution, and that does involve prorating. But again, we are the three biggest, we are the three biggest departments, and every fiscal manager in that department. Has said it will not take. More than a few minutes to come up with a list to prorate the employees who were hired in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. And have that accumulation added into Springbrook, it would be a one time deal to prorate that based on their anniversary date. And. So that people who were maybe hired March first, which is the example given. Allow them till June to use that, a one time deal, again, just for twenty twenty three. And then what, everybody will be back on their regular anniversary date, which is when they are awarded vacation as it has been forever. I know Health and Human Services, we already have our numbers ready to go, it will not be more work for the clerk's office, they just have to input it into Springbrook, which we are doing as. Anyway, because we are uploading all of the vacation and accrual time into Springbrook. Should not be. For the clerk's office. It is equitable for all employees who were hired in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. And I'll give you an example of why I feel this is important. We have an employee, a very valuable employee, a nurse who was hired during the pandemic, hired in October of 2021. No, I'm sorry. Yes, 2021. So in 2022 of October, she received five days. She won't get two weeks until October 2023. Whereas new staff coming in right now will start out with more vacation, and she was on the front lines. She was giving vaccinations, she was giving, uh, she was doing contact tracing, she was doing all kinds of very hazardous work, and, and it's just, it doesn't sit well with staff. That's just one example. Um, we have new staff who were hired in November. I have three new staff hired on the same day in November of 2022. New staff hired anytime after January 1st will start out with two weeks. They won't get two weeks until November of 2023. So if you can see, you know, it's just not equitable the way, the way it's set up. I, I appreciate Brad's recommendation. I think it's, um, I think prorated would be more fair and usable for the employees, so that somebody who starts out with um, two weeks vacation, say their anniversary date was in, so we'll say January, and, well, no, that's not a good one, but I'm getting off track. Anyway, um, it is not more work for us. It is equitable to do it the way it is proposed here. Your three biggest departments, the Sheriff's Department, Highway Department, Health and Human Services, have all signed on to the letter that's in the packet with our recommendation. And, um, I think all of the employees who this affects, at least in my department, feel this is an equitable way to do it. Um, again, it's not more work, and, and it's a one-time deal. It's once 2023 is over, everybody will be on the same schedule, and we won't have hard feelings. I do admit, you know, hiring is important, but retention is also very important. I mean, we have some staff saying, well, maybe I should just, you know, quit and apply next time there's a job opening, and then you know, they'll start out with more vacation. So it's in the packet. That is what we recommend, and, um, I can take any questions that you may have.
Go ahead, Laura.
Um, Matt's question, did this go to exec? And exec kicked it here?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, is this exec's recommendation then that we've got?
No, exec recommended to start at beginning of the year. Like, like the original motion, like the original board decision was.
You have to get your mic.
Yeah.
Or, um, okay.
Damn.
Um, I do think, first of all, I, I do agree with Terry, Matt, and, and Brian. But I also think that Mr. Ray's proposal actually does exactly what they want. The people, the person hired in October of 2020 would be getting two weeks right now, today. And then in October 2020, anytime not used or expired, we'll begin another two weeks. The same is true of the person hired in October 2021. They would be getting two weeks of vacation right now to use until October 21, 3. And then October 23, when that expires, they would be getting their two weeks. Um, the only people that could, that may not be if, who would be affected a little bit more would be the ones who were hired in that March, February, March, April, because they wouldn't have as much time to carry forward, to use that vacation as somebody hired later in the year. It's, I know it's not fair, and I'm gonna be honest, there's no such thing as a fair solution in this. Somebody's not gonna be happy and treated like they're, feeling like they're not being treated fairly, no matter how we do it. It's just, there has, there ha, just has to be a way to come up with a solution. I think Mr. Ray's solution is good. I think what Terry and uh, talked about is good, too. I mean.
Right, so.
Um, so, Mr. Ray, so you would say, I just want to make sure I got this straight. Um, so starting the first or today, the 7th of February, anyone hired in 21 or 22 would have two weeks vacation. And then, um, and they would be able to use it up until their first anniversary, the anniversary date in 2023. And then they would just go to the two weeks again. They wouldn't carry anything over, or it would be two weeks to use now, and from whichever date you pick, and then, or approve, and then on their anniversary in 23, they would just be at the two weeks. Okay.
Laura, did you wanna speak?
Uh, Dan, I'd like to make a recommendation here.
Yes, sir.
We're beating a dead horse here. Um, I'd like to see you take this back to staff, see what works best for them, what's the most equitable way, taking into consideration the proposals that were put on the table.
Yeah.
And then bring it back to this board so we can vote on it.
Do you want to come to the county board, or just have executive committee make the decision?
The longer we wait, the more people that are gonna be impacted. We have a proposal from the three biggest. I'm fine modifying my motion to just be the prorated. I thought just not prorating it was simpler because going through and prorating is more complicated, and Terry said it wasn't that big of a deal, but that's the simplest solution was just everybody gets the same thing. But if we want to prorate, that's fine, and that's what the three biggest, uh, sent us a letter. I think we should pass it today.
Right, so.
Um, I agree. We are, um, moving forward with, um, the accruals through Springbrook to get the timesheet entry going. And if we have to wait until another county board comes, we could, we need to know. I mean, it would be beneficial to know now what the board decides, so.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanna say I agree with Sue. I would rather see this, um, decided on today. I'm not in agreement of prorating stuff. I mean, we're, we're gonna do whatever you say, but I think prorating is not the answer for it. I, um, I would ag, agree with his proposal. You know, um, with us having these new changes in the Clerk's Office and the employee self-serve that we're really working hard to want to get that out there for them to use. And with our meeting that we have tomorrow, it would be more beneficial because we have a lot of our accrual stuff there, and now we just have to upload it. I think somebody was questioning us calling, you know, Springbrook and seeing what else they have. Right now, everything is set up for anniversary dat, dates. I looked over the report that Sue gave me for our workers here. It's all laid out really nice. It's just, we need to know what we're, our start points are, so that we can get it up and going. So I, I would agree with Bradley's suggestion.
All right, go ahead, Bill. Bill Metzinger.
Your mic's turned off.
We can't hear you.
How about now?
Yes, we can hear you.
I, I would like to second, uh, Bradley's motion. Did you get that?
Yes, I did.
So that's what I'm doing.
Point of clarification, which one of Brad's motions, this, maybe he would do either one.
Wait a minute, no. We have one more. George?
Uh, I was just asking if it would be simple just to add to the motion to allow people hired in 2022 to carry over as a one-time exception? Would that be a simple way of solving the problem?
The, the, the carryover muddies the waters, is what we're hearing. Is, and so there is no carryover of this one time. We're giving them a benefit. If, if they were hired in October, they probably can use it. If they're hired in March, they're probably not gonna be able to use it. But it's, it's trying to be as fair as possible, and just giving it, and I would argue if they truly want to carry over, they go talk, because according to the handbook, they can go talk to their supervisor and the county administrator on rare occasions, and Dan can be the bad guy, and none of us have to be the bad guy.
Uh, true and equitable would probably be giving them, uh, compensation for the days that they can't use this one time, but, um, I don't know, that muddies it as well.
Laura.
Um, I still don't know which motion that Bill seconded, otherwise, um, from what I'm hearing, Brad's thing would be easier to deal with because that's what I was gonna do, is second Brad's motion with the 10 days. What it means is they get the 10 days, it goes away, but really it's there again, so it's kind of just contiguous pushes through, and it seems to be the easiest way to do it.
That's the one I seconded.
Dan, you wanted to speak?
No, I just, I was gonna ask Mr. Ray, Mr. Ray to repeat his motion so that everybody is fully understanding what is being done, and what Mr. Metzinger seconded. He can confirm then that, too.
So you want my motion again? So, the second sentence in the vacation section of the employee handbook, my motion is to make it read vacation is accrued in the 12-month period beginning at time of hire to be used in the 12-month period prior to the employee's anniversary date.
How does staff feel about that?
First, first of all, does that what Bill seconded?
Pardon?
Mr. Metzinger, is that what you seconded?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's clear. Um, you asked how staff does it. Terry, would you want to respond?
I, I think that's better than the proposal that was included in the packet. Um, I, I would hope there would be allowed a little extra leeway for some carryover since we're already into February. Um, I, I would have preferred the prorated, but this is, this is a good second option.
Go ahead, Matt.
I'd like to call the question.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second call or question. Okay, we're gonna vote on the call of question. Yes, everybody, question, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, most curious, thank you. Now we'll vote on this. What? It's coming from all directions. Yeah, well, I'm, I'm on the changes to the proposal made by Mr. Ray. Everybody's aware of what that is now? I know you're a little confused. I am. You ready to vote then? Pardon? I wasn't looking for your approval. I just want to know if everybody's ready to vote. No more discussion. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Most curious, thank you. We'll go to 6G, approval of emergency, no, excuse me, uh, I, approval of employee handbook change clarification, sick leave payout.
Um, again, Sue and Karen will be handling this one.
So, um, there were some, um, we needed to clarify in the, um, handbook how sick leave is paid out if it was by days or hours. Um, when the verbiage came into the employee handbook, it came after Act 10. So there were union contracts in place prior to, um, prior to the employee handbook. Um, at that time, there, I don't think there was anybody in the county who was doing flex days or anything like that, so, um, over the course of however many years, um, things have changed, um, days of workdays, hours have changed. So we wanted to, uh, clarify that a um, clarify in hours instead of days, because um, some people work an 8.75-hour day, but it's only a 35, not only, but it makes up a 35-hour week. And some people work four-hour, or four 10-hour days. So we didn't want to mislead the employees and say you get, um, 40 days paid out, just for instance, at 10-hour days is it, or based on a 40-hour week? So that's where the clarification comes into play.
I just have a, uh, point of clarification before the motion is, in the recommended motion, it has the date of January 1st, 2021. Is that supposed to be January 1st, 2012?
No, um, yeah, right here. Yeah, yeah.
The very last date.
On the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It should be 2012.
Yes.
Yes.
Then I would move as that motion. And I, if, if you want, I can read it, but I think everybody has it since it was in the packet.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Brad Ray to approve. Seconded by Clarence Campbell. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Most curious, thank you. I will go to GA, 6G, uh, approval of emergency fire warden organization list.
Oh, this is a list put out by the DNR every year, and the county board has to approve it every year.
Kathy?
I make a motion. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Most curious, thank you. Next, we need a motion to go into closed session. Okay.
Franek second.
By Marty.
Liz, I'll motion, I'll second the motion.
Pardon?
She didn't raise her hand.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
We'll call a vote, please.
Stark. Stendor.
Yes.
Berlin.
Yes.
Husey.
Yes.
Micah. Vtech.
Yes.
Huber.
Yes.
Shudy. Yes. Carl.
Yes.
Murdig.
Yes.
Elifson.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Negro.
Yes.
Metzinger.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Kenny.
Yes.
Pufal.
Yes.
Franek.
Yes.
I'd like to ask that, um, Chris Hoffman be able to stay? And Lori Schmidt. And of course, our clerk. Or her designated.
I'm sorry, who was the last one?
Heather.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna pause recording.
Lori, can you please let everybody back in to the?
There, I did right now.
Are we recording?
Yes, we are.
I make a motion, it might be, makes a motion to go with the recommendation of the Finance Committee. I make a motion, it might be, makes a motion to go with the recommendation of the finance committee. On this purchase of five, uh, five forty's.
By Mike Berlin to approve the land purchase, seconded by Kathy Shudy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, thank you. If, if we're spending money.
Roll call vote for this one?
Yeah, we need roll call.
Purchase.
Can we, there's a resolution that should be called up first to make approve this.
The what?
There's a resolution that should be up next to. So number eight A. That's what we need, that's what you need to vote on.
Resolution?
Yeah, there's a resolution. Yeah.
Uh, might be, uh, makes a motion to adopt a resolution, fourteen forty.
Okay, backing it up. Resolution's been made and seconded to approve the R O two, twenty twenty three, fourteen forty. Regarding land purchase, all in favor, say aye.
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 Can we do a roll call?
We're spending money, we should do a roll call.
This is to approve resolution R O two, twenty twenty three, fourteen forty. Berlin.
Yes.
Husey.
Yes.
Mika. Vtech.
Yes.
Huber.
Yes.
Shudy.
Yeah.
Carl. Murdig.
Yes.
Elifson.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Negro.
Yes.
Metzinger.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Kenny.
Yes.
Pufal.
Yes.
Franek.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Stendor.
Yes.
Nineteen, yes, pass.
Motion carries, thank you.
Reports and updates, Dan.
Okay, as many of you know, I've been meeting with our state legislators quite a bit lately. Um, been pretty much weekly. Um, the topic is always the, is the taxation issue in the town of Sandburn. So, Mark, yeah. Mark A from Bayfield County and I have been working on this because they're affected also. We, and we've worked with, working with WCA and we've asked the governor and the state legislature to cover the entire cost of the Samberg taxation issue. So we've asked them to make the counties whole. To make the municipalities whole. Cause they're gonna be losing money now. And to pay off the illegal taxes that tribal members paid from seventeen to present. And that amount, that amount alone is nine hundred and ninety-three thousand and counting. Uh, the reason why we're asking the state to pay that is because in the end, if the state does it, it's gonna be Ashland County taxpayers that pay for it. It's gonna be school district, ask school district taxpayers that pay for it. And of course, the few residents in the town of Sandburn who are left paying for it. Um, we're asking them to make, help out the municipalities because the town of Sandburn itself, if all these back taxes go into effect, there are many residents who are going to take on fractional tribal ownership. Which is taking out tribal members one percent on your deed title, thereby making all the property tax exempt. Um, you know, when people had a two hundred and eighteen percent increase, like they did this year and potentially looking at much, much, much more. I mean, worst case scenario is a thousand percent increase. I mean, I, you can't blame people for doing the fractional ownership. Um, it's legal. I've checked with the Department of Revenue. Everything that's going on is done perfectly legally. So we're asking the state for a global solution to fix this problem since they were the ones who created it in the first place. Um, so we're hoping the governor keep, puts it in his budget. If not, we're hoping our legislators can get it in the state budget. And we'll continue working with them to resolve this problem and not throw the burden back on Ashland County taxpayers, school district taxpayers and town of Sandburn taxpayers.
George, is this an issue throughout the state on all tribal lands?
No, it's not an issue throughout the state yet. Um, the LCO decision only affected the Bad River, um, Lactaflambeau, um, Red Cliff. It's basically the Lake Superior Chippewa tribes. So it only really affects, um, Sawyer County, Bayfield County, Ashton County and Vilas County.
And Dan, this is Blake. We were the largest impacted by this. And then, okay, so I know we talked about this a little bit, but do at what point do the Ashland County residents need to be made aware of what's going on? Are we too early to that? Because right now it doesn't seem like the awareness is real strong and this is gonna a lot of anxiety within people between both us and Bad River. And so I just wanna make sure that as a county, we're getting ahead of this. I know you're waiting for some hopefully relief on our legislation, but waiting legislators is always, you know, it's.
Well, I can say the governor's budget drops February fifteenth. So I, I would, I would like to wait at least to make sure. You know, if it's in the governor's budget, that's great. You know, then we can have something we can tell everybody. Um, if it's not in the governor's budget, yeah, I think we need to start, you know, doing whatever we can to let the public know. I, I could tell you the Daily Press is already asking questions anyhow, so.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Kathy?
So Dan and, and Mr. Pufal, we got a lot of calls from this situation.
Yep.
And without mentioning any names, one property owner, their house taxes were fifteen thousand a year. It went to thirty-five thousand for their taxes.
Yeah.
Because fifteen percent of the people in the town of Sandburn now are required to pay all the taxes for everybody.
Yes.
They didn't have plans to do that. That didn't, you know, that wasn't fair to them. So.
Right.
Do you have an idea when the state might make a decision?
Well, the state budget, they're supposed to make pass it by June. Um, but then years passed, they've gone into August before passing it. And the state statute allows for the last year's fiscal, last year's budget levels to carry forward until the legislature passes a budget. Um, you know, I'm hopeful. I mean, it, I mean, this is not the intent of the legislature. When they passed the levy limits, you know, you know, when is this all gonna start happening? Um, right, there were a bunch of, what hap, how it happened was when the D O R said all that land has to be assessed back in two thousand and fifteen. And I have a copy of that letter, if anybody wants to see it. It's kind of grainy and hard to read, but I have a copy of it. Um, a bunch of tribal members filed court cases here in Ashland County. A whole bunch of them, forty some. Those were put on hold because of the federal court action going on.
Okay.
Um, now the appeals court made their decision back in, was it November? Um, those cases, the federal courts will send those back to state court at some point. At which point the town of Sandburn wants to settle with them, with the taxpayers, because they're, I mean, interest is accruing at one and a half percent per month and they want to settle. And people rightfully want the money back. At that point, the town of Sandburn is gonna attempt to take out a loan. A million dollar loan to pay off the taxpayers.
Okay.
Um, who were illegally taxed. And let's be clear, if you read the court decision, those taxes were illegal today, they were illegal yesterday, they were illegal back to eighteen fifty-four. Uh, that's what this court said. So all those taxes need to be refunded. Um, if they get a loan, then they're gonna pay everybody back. In full, and I have a list of every taxpayer who, and the current dollar amount they would be owed. Um, our tax list will put that together for us. Um, now, what's gonna end up happening then after that? I don't know. They're gonna charge back the county for our portion of taxes. They're gonna charge back the school district for their portion of taxes and the tech school. So that's, I mean, that's, you know, the school district's gonna get a half million dollar hit right off the bat. You know, we're gonna get a couple hundred thousand dollar hit right off the bat. Um, there's nothing that requires the town to use the money from the chargeback to pay that alone. They can put that money in the general fund. So the taxpayers there are still responsible for that loan. The fifteen percent of them. Which is why I say worst case scenario, their taxes go up a thousand percent or more. Um, that's also why we're asking the state to pay for it. To make everybody whole. To have a resolution that just deals with the situation and cleans up the mess they, they created. Um, but yes, there is a possibility the state washes their hands of it. And we have a gigantic financial mess on our hands and a lot of angry people. Um, so, you know, I, I was in Madison at the beginning, uh, a couple of weeks ago, talking with our legislators. I've been on Zoom with them for the last two weeks, every Monday. Um, Representative Green's coming in here next Monday. Um, and I'll be in Madison again at the end of the month, talking to them. Um, all I can say is that it's, I'm, I, I feel good about our conversations with our legislators. I think they're listening. I think they wanna help. So, I mean, I, I, it feels, it feels good. I think, like I said, I think they really do wanna help. So I'm sorry, any, any more questions?
Dan, thank you for trying to help us with the situation, because this was not, this wasn't right.
No, I mean, I mean, we're looking at a total cost, cost of about five point three million for all the counties and municipalities involved. And Ashland County is eighty-six percent of that.
Thanks again.
Anything else, Dan?
No, that's what I've been doing. Uh, I hate, I, the other stuff that I've been dealing with is you've all seen in the newspapers, so.
George, um, a different issue, question for the administrator. Uh, do you expect the Kimberly Lassiter issue to continue? And if so, on what paths?
Um, she has until Friday to file a grievance. Um, uh, per our handbook. I don't know what her plans are after that. I can say there will be no public statements coming from my office or the sheriff's office. That any comments or concerns or questions should be returned, excuse me, directed to corporate counsel. And corporate counsel will speak on behalf of the county. So if you are asked, this is my ask of you, if you are asked about the situation, please refer to corporate counsel. Um, so I, that's about all I can say without creating potential add-on.
Matt?
Yeah, I guess more of a statement, I'm, I'm I'm hoping that we could maybe get with La Pointe and sit back at the table. I know there's been some tension and you know, it just seems to me that it would be uh, uh, good to have a little cooling off period that we've had, but I'd like to, if at all possible, see us at least sit down and try again. So, thank you.
Uh, this one might, might be. I, uh, I agree with Matt. And, uh, if, uh, like, uh, Dan greatly had indicated before, if we're approached by any media at all, news media or whatever, uh, we, we have no comment. This should go to counsel, which we've already turned that over to our attorneys. So mute is the, on my side over here.
I should also note, we have a different attorney for the La Pointe issue, for Max Lindsay. Max has conflict of interest in this case. So we hired a Tolles Law Firm, Milwaukee, the, the firm, the county's association uses.
Liz?
In the, um, situation where other employees may be, you know, watching their backs and being scared, um, in the future going forward, what committee or any commission can we, um, have people, you know, speak if they need to speak or what kind of rules can we change? So protecting employees from a future incident as this?
Um, again, I, I, I won't talk about the Kim Lavasson situation in public. Um, but employees who feel like they've been wrong, there's a grievance process to go through. Um, they would file the grievance with either me or with corporate counsel. Um, and the executive committee would take that up. Um, it would go final resolution by the county board. So, and the reason why executive would take it up is they are the human resources committee.
Question for Dan. Has Kim talked to you regarding this? Has she indicated she's gonna grieve?
Um, I have not spoken to him at all, and if she did attempt to contact me, I would inform her to contact corporate counsel.
Okay.
That it?
I got a question. This is Bill. Have we replaced supervisor, um, yet?
No, um, I've been talking to somebody who's expressed interest. However, she has yet to turn in a letter of interest.
Is that Laura?
I told, yeah. I talked to her as, uh, early, recently as Thursday, and she had not turned in a letter yet. So hopefully she does soon and we can put it on the next agenda.
Are you finished?
I'm finished, Jeff.
Any more questions for Dan? All right, we'll go to staffing and personnel.
So, uh, well, the list speaks for itself. Uh, to share. Share screen. So, uh, some of this, uh, we've had a couple retirements. Um, some lateral moves too. Obviously, the biggest one is we have a new sheriff. And then as far as the merry-go-round from when Pete Hurley left, uh, bringing Amber to Highway and then Marcy to Highway now. Um, yeah, it's a jumbled mess. Anyhow, so we're finally done with the merry-go-round of people switching positions and moving up. So, uh, let's see. Do you have any questions about the list?
I got a question.
Sure.
We have any indication given why we're getting resignations from the deal?
Um, well, one, it's, it's a hard job. I mean, it is a, it's a stressful job. I mean, and it's not for everyone. Uh, other reasons I, I can't really go to, into an open session.
Hey Dan, how many open positions do we have in the county right now?
We only have, actually only have a couple, to be honest. Um, we have a couple corrections officers that are still open and that's been an ongoing issue. Uh, we need to hire a new deputy because of promotions within the department. Uh, we just had a highway operator quit this week. So they will be hiring somebody for highway, because we're nowhere near done with snow yet. So we need to have drivers. Um, I believe every office in the courthouse is fully staffed at this point. So we're mostly fully staffed. I think HHS still is looking for a social worker, but they've been looking for one, that position for half a year. Oh, and actually, there's an interview tomorrow.
George?
Yeah, my, my, uh, question, comment is, and, and I read it and I, I, I was amazed that we have an at-will program and I see it's basically supported by the state. How, how, I mean, we got unions everywhere. How does these positions and how many of these positions are at-will?
Every county position except for, um, sheriff's deputy is an at-will position for act ten.
So everybody in the jail is an at-will position?
Correct. Act ten, that act ten established which positions are not held, are not at-will. Or they say only police officers and firefighters can unionize.
No, the state, this is a state statute is.
Yeah, act ten.
Can we do anything else with that? Uh, no?
No, act ten.
So they, when they sign on, they sign on in an at-will?
Yeah, and act ten specifically, um, did not make correctional officers union eligible.
But that baffles me.
Yeah.
Okay, after nothing else, uh, we go to county board supervisors. Anybody got anything to report? Yeah, Ron.
Well, at the last meeting of the snowmobile alliance. At the last meeting for the snowmobile alliance for Ashland County, I was lucky enough to be elected president.
So you showed up late.
Yeah. But I'd like to let everyone know that, uh, I'm really very happy that all the clubs are working with all the other clubs. We run in, uh, equipment breakdowns. Everybody's working with everybody and all the trails are getting covered. And there's no complaining. So for once, hopefully we can keep this going for a while. Hoping.
Kathy?
Very brief. On May third, we are going to be rededicating the Lake Galley camp or boat landing and, and parking lot. It was brought to our attention that it needed work and the highway and forestry, our work have already done their work. And as soon as the blacktop can be laid for the boat landing, it'll have new, new blacktop and a new updated design. And they're gonna have a get together at Buddha's Bar and they will have an open bar that you can come and enjoy the, right before fishing season, the new boat landing at, uh, Lake Galley and Mellon.
Are you providing shuttle service home?
Just some good news to share with you. Everybody work together and it's very positive.
Anybody else got anything to report?
This is Blake.
Blake, go ahead.
Just, uh, I've been kinda hearing some grumblings, but there's a, the tribe, the Bad River Tribe has over forty million dollars and they're breaking ground in June of twenty twenty-three to build a pool slash, um, Y type facility out on the Bad River. So it is a huge opportunity for the Ashland County residents to have access to a pool. So if anybody knows Bad River tribal, uh, members, just make sure that they're aware that we wanna have access as Ashland County residents.
Just a question, um, the closed session matters. Um, is that now open or do you want these packets left on the table?
No, it's open now.
I don't think you have to.
Yeah, it's open. Okay. Once we voted to spend the money, it was open.
If there's no more comments, no more reports. That's good. Motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I'll second Blake.
We have a motion to second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, we're adjourned.